Good evening, good evening. Welcome to the March 18th, 2025 meeting of the Carrboro Town Council. Good to see everyone here this evening and we will start our meeting like we always do. We have a guest poet tonight and so we're real excited to hear from Emily Shearer. So Emily, welcome.
Thank you for having me to open tonight's meeting with poetry. My name is Emily Shearer and tonight's selection will be from favorites Mary Oliver and Denise Levertov. The poem is not the world. It isn't even the first page of the world. But the poem wants to flower like a flower. It knows that much. It wants to open itself like the door of a little temple so that you might step inside and be cooled and refreshed unless yourself than part of everything. A certain day became a presence to me. There it was comforting me, a sky, air, light, a being. And before it started to descend from the height of noon, it leaned over and struck my shoulder as if with the flat of a sword, granting me honor and a task. The day's blow rang out metallic or it was I, a bell awakened. And what I heard was my whole self saying and singing, "I can." Thank you.
Thank you so much Emily and thank you for joining us this evening and sharing that wonderful poem. We appreciate you so much. We are down to the town manager's update. Town manager Toni.
Good evening Mayor and council members. Just wanted to remind everyone that we are officially opening the Grand, the Drakeford Library Complex this Friday at 11 o'clock. So please join us in the celebration. Thank you all for already enjoying our wonderful new library complex facility. Also, our communications and engagement department has mailed out postcards to all Carrboro residents. This is to provide information, updates on upcoming dates and events and give you an idea of what the town has been doing over the past year. There'll also be a QR code for a video message from our mayor on updates about the town. So be on the lookout for those. And that's it. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you Town Manager Toni. We are now at the public comment portion of our meeting. I do not have anyone signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that, from the audience that's not signed up that would like to give public comment? So we have, what is that, four hands? Can you just come in the order and state your name? And just come on up here. You have a hoodie on. Are all four of you going to speak or just one for the four? Which proclamation?
The proclamations that we're doing today, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Good to go. So I skipped over the proclamations and I'm gonna laugh about that right now. It's been that kind of day. So we're gonna go back to the proclamations. So I have two proclamations to read. Councilmember Frey will read a proclamation and Councilmember Haven O'Donnell will bring forth a resolution, forgive me for losing my place on my own agenda. Okay. I'm gonna start with proclamation for World Water Day. I do believe, well, I know that we have Mr. Mark Hale who will be accepting this proclamation. He's seated right behind me and he will also say a few words. World Water Day. Whereas, the theme of World Water Day 2025 is glacier preservation. Glaciers are critical to life. Their meltwater is essential for drinking water, agriculture, industry, clean energy production and healthy ecosystems. And whereas, about 70% of the earth's fresh water exists as snow or ice. As the planet gets hotter, our frozen world is shrinking, making the water cycle more unpredictable. And whereas, countless communities and ecosystems are at risk of devastation. For billions of people, meltwater flows are changing, causing floods, droughts, landslides and sea level rise and damaging ecosystems. And whereas, glaciers reflect sunlight due to their bright surfaces, helping to regulate the earth's temperature. As they melt, this reflective surface shrinks, causing more heat absorption which accelerates global warming. And whereas, as we work together to mitigate and adapt to climate change, glacier preservation is a top priority. And whereas, we must reduce greenhouse gas emissions to slow down glacial retreat and we must manage meltwater more sustainably. And whereas, saving our glaciers is a survival strategy for people and the planet. Now therefore I, Barbara M. Fushie, Mayor of the town of Carrboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim March 22nd, 2025 to be World Water Day in Carrboro. I encourage all residents to work together to learn more about the water cycle and to raise awareness and inspire action to preserve glaciers and adapt to a changing climate. This, the 18th day of March, 2025. Mr. Mark Hale.
I'm honored to accept this proclamation of World Water Day on behalf of the residents of Carrboro. I'm a relatively recent resident, came here from the Midwest. I'm grandchild of two ministers and a former math lecturer, but I won't spend 50 minutes. Aristotle thought that earth, air, fire and water were fundamental elements, the building blocks of everything. The belief shows up in philosophy, medicine and descriptions of human traits. We still talk of fiery orators or icy indifference. Let's focus on water and fire. We need good water. Our bodies are 45 to 75% water, depending on who we are. It's essential to nearly all life, from plants to humans. Humans have long sought to control Mother Nature, but we are learning that she is hard to control. Water nurtures life, but it can destroy it in floods. Heat and fire support life, but also destroy it. On climate change, we seem to be moving through the seven stages of grief. Shock, denial, anger, bargaining, depression, testing and acceptance. We need to move to acceptance and action with all appropriate haste. I know the glaciers I saw in Washington Cascades and Glacier Park in the 1970s and 80s were magnificent, but they're diminishing. Last week, there was news that some Greenlander fishermen could not fish on the ice any longer because the ice wasn't thick enough. If, if the ice shield on Greenland melted entirely, sea levels would rise around 23 feet. I think that's a problem for North Carolina as well as everyone else. Already, there is a small island nation disappearing in the Western Pacific. As Lucy would say, "Good grief, let's get to work, learn and take action." I want to end with two familiar statements, but I hope, that I hope are warnings but not predictions. As James Baldwin quoted a spiritual and an exhortation to action, "God sent Noah the rainbow sign. No more water, but fire next time." And about anger and indifference, Robert Frost wrote, "Some say the world will end in fire. Some say ice. From what I've tasted of desire, I hold with those who favor fire. But if it had to perish twice, I think I know enough of hate to say that for destruction, ice is also great and would suffice." Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate those, those comments, Mr. Hale. The next proclamation I have is Transit Operator Appreciation Day. Whereas, local and regional public transit are necessities for our community. And whereas, communities across the United States observe Transit Operator Appreciation Day each year on March 18th to recognize transit operators' dedication, hard work and the essential services they provide as they move people about by rail, bus, taxi and van, to name a few. And whereas, transit operators start their days before the sun rises and finish them long after long after the sun is set, including working weekends and on or around holidays, while many of us are spending time with family and friends. And whereas, in addition to meeting stringent safety requirements, transit operators must demonstrate customer service, patience, empathy, and understanding to create a welcoming and inclusive environment for community members and visitors. And whereas, transit operators work hard each day to help transit users access jobs, healthcare, school, community services, and many other personal, social, and civic opportunities. And whereas, we have been shown how vital public transit is to our communities, and how transit operators continue to work on the front lines, adapting to new work environments and safety requirements, and helping transit users safely reach essential destinations while also responding to various changes in their own lives. And whereas, here in our community, Chapel Hill Transit operates the second-largest transit system in North Carolina, as a partnership between the town of Carrboro, the town of Chapel Hill, and the University of North Carolina, providing fare-free, seven-day-a-week transit service to help our communities and the university meet our transportation, sustainability, and equity goals. And whereas, in 2016, Go Triangle extended regional transit service into Carrboro, and since that time has operated weekday service between downtown Carrboro and the Triangle region. And whereas, Carrboro spends over $2 million annually to provide free bus rides. And whereas, Carrboro is committed to addressing disparate impacts of transportation decisions and prioritizing investments in racial, minority, and lower-income communities. Whereas, Carrboro has partnered with Chapel Hill and UNC for 50 years, developing a local transit system that serves almost 7 million bus trips per year, and on average, nearly 8,000 boardings per day in Carrboro alone. Now therefore I, Barbara M. Fushie, mayor of the town of Carrboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim March 18th, 2025, to be Transit Operator Appreciation Day in Carrboro. I encourage all residents and visitors to incorporate public transit into their transportation routines, to become advocates for local and regional public transit, and most important, to thank our local and regional transit operators at every opportunity this, the 18th day of March, 2025. And is Mr. Charles Waller here? I don't think he is here, but we will get this proclamation to him. And so now, we will, in this order, we'll hear from councilmember Frey with a really, really important proclamation, and then councilmember Haven O'Donnell with an important resolution.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I asked the mayor if I could write this one because it's personal to me, and I appreciate you all listening to it today, including those of you who are listening online. This is the proclamation for the Transgender Day of Visibility. Whereas, Transgender Day of Visibility was started in 2009 by trans elder and activist Rachel Crandall Crocker in response to the lack of visibility for transgender people and the focus of that limited public attention on violence and cruelty against transgender people. And whereas, Crandall Crocker aspired to create an occasion for the transgender community to come together in joy and celebration of their resilience and their living achievements. And whereas, the transgender community includes all those whose gender does not align with the sex they were assigned at birth, including many non-binary and third-gender people. And whereas, transgender people have existed in all human societies across time, including those which welcomed them and those which did not have names for them. And whereas, there are at least 1.6 million transgender individuals in the United States, or around 1.5% of the population, according to a 2022 study from the Williams Institute at UCLA Law School. And whereas, Black, Indigenous, and Latina people are more likely to identify as transgender according to the same study, and transgender people of color are at the forefront of movements for LGBTQ+ equality. And whereas, the percentage of younger people identifying as transgender has increased as visibility provides them with examples of transgender adults living openly and achieving success in a wide variety of pursuits. And whereas, 94% of those who pursued a social or medical transition reported that they were more satisfied with their lives, according to the Early Insights Report of the groundbreaking U.S. Trans Survey conducted in 2022 by the National Center for Transgender Equality. And whereas, transgender youths who have socially transitioned and are supported in their gender identity by their families have comparable mental health to the general population, according to research published in the Journal of the American Academy of Pediatrics in 2016. And whereas, transgender people are well-represented among the outstanding inventors, artists, scientists, and advocates of the 20th and 21st centuries, a tiny fractional subset of whom I have put on the slide behind you so that folks can learn a little more about them. And whereas, young transgender people are succeeding in fields as varied as chemistry, poetry, and politics, and I have another slide with just a couple outstanding trans rising stars under 40. And whereas, in the face of ignorance and oppression, transgender people continue to show the world that they not only exist, but persist and thrive. And whereas, nothing the governments of the United States, or of the state of North Carolina, or the officers thereof attempt to do will change these facts. And whereas, the town of Carrboro stands with, celebrates, and defends its transgender residents and employees, and supports the mission of the International Transgender Day of Visibility. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, standing in for Barbara M. Fushie, mayor of the town of Carrboro, do hereby proclaim Monday, March 31st, 2025, as Transgender Day of Visibility in the town of Carrboro. I ask all residents of Carrboro to celebrate our transgender community, to educate ourselves about the contributions of transgender people, and to support our transgender community's efforts to achieve equity and full inclusion in our society. And be it further resolved that the transgender pride flag be flown at Town Hall from Friday, March 28th, through Thursday, April 3rd, in honor of the holiday, this, the 18th day of March, 2025. And it is my pleasure to invite up to the podium several representatives from the LGBTQ Pop-Up Center of Carrboro to accept the proclamation and comment if they would like to.
Thank you so much, councilmember Frey. And as, as those community members are coming, I just, I do want to say, this proclamation... It takes on a different meaning this year, simply because of the attempted erasure, you know, of people. And I apologize, I did not know that I was gonna get emotional like this, but it's just really tragic. We see you, we hear you, we love you, you're a part of this community, and that's all I wanted to say. I just thank you for being here. And thank you, councilmember Frey, for reading the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So I'd like to, just to take a minute to introduce myself. My name is Devin Gilgore. I've been a member of this community my entire life, grew up here. And I could share my personal experience, but I choose to take the time I have in front of you to share the experience and speak for trans people of color who are more at risk to the disabled trans community that is more at risk, for the trans youth that are struggling right now. I've been out and loud in this community for, for a long time. I think a number of people in this room know who I am. And so people come to me and look to me for comfort, and so I wanted to share with you, I have received hundreds, hundreds, thousands of phone calls and emails and texts from parents who are scared for their kids, for people who are displaced, homeless, which presents a whole different array of obstacles for my community, because then if we seek going to a shelter, there's a question of what shelter are we allowed to be and share space with. This is a really scary time for us. My passport was seized by the federal government, and I'll get it back with a female gender marker on it, which puts me at exponentially high risk of violence if I leave this country because it outs me the moment I, I, I share it. So my main purpose in coming here was to say that the proclamation is moving, but what's more moving is if we put umf behind that proclamation the other 364 days of the year to make sure that my community stays employed, has access to healthcare, and is housed, and is safe.
Hi. Hi, I'm Raphael Collins. I struggle with housing insecurity. And like, when I was in the Orange County Men's Shelter, they told me that they do not have, they do not have any transgender policies in place for clients that are that. So I had to tell staff members that I was trans, because that is a safety risk if they do not know. They do not have trainings on transgender people. When I was doing intake, they told me, the person that was doing it told me, "I don't feel comfortable asking these questions for intake." I was trying to get a housing choice voucher before they paused, but I am disabled. My case manager told me I had to have a housing organization, like an organization to help me clean my house in order to get such an aid voucher, but I'm on Medicaid. That takes a long time to get those, that organization in place to be able to get those services. That is all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. My name's Amanda Ashley. I'm a longtime Carrboro-Chapel Hill resident, and things have gotten better since I first began transitioning in 2000, 2001. There's a lot of work to be done, and the attitude is very tender here, but we need to be aware of the larger picture. The Nazis are here. And just like in the original Third Reich, the first group attacked were transvestites, transgender, and transsexuals. Writings from the Guttmacher Institute were burned. First, they came for the trans people, and you know the rest. They're doing the same here. First, they're coming for the immigrants, now they're coming for the trans people. They're taking the language away. Being forthright, honest, and true in language is the first thing. It's important in healthcare. It's important in civil rights. And I would call upon the town of Carrboro to be the opposite of what the University of North Carolina has said, and saying they will comply. They will be complicit in the first part, and then in for a penny, in for a pound, they'll be in for the rest. I would like the town of Carrboro to officially say, "We will not comply." Thank you.
Just want to say thank you, Mayor Fushie, councilmembers, for this timely and much-needed Since 2015, organizers with the Pop-Up Center have curated spaces of care and resistance in Carrboro. Since 2020, many of us have had to leave Carrboro due to the affordable housing crisis. But over the years, we've gathered community for queer family dinners, honored our dead at Trans Day of Remembrance vigils, stood against hate while counterprotesting the KKK, and campaigned to improve inhumane conditions faced by incarcerated trans North Carolinians. Trans Day of Visibility is about recognizing a right to existence that trans people are collectively forced to defend every day in communities across the globe. I want to uplift that for the trans community, visibility greatly increases the risk of harm from discrimination and violence, especially through the current surge of anti-trans hate. T-Dub recognizes the resilience of all trans people, especially Black and Brown, Indigenous, low-income, and disabled trans people, and others pushed to the margins. T-Dub speaks to the courage, dignity, and hopes of trans people as they seek to thrive as their own true selves. Speaking of thriving, I must also uplift how systemic anti-Black racism combines with transphobia to create vast disparities within our LGBTQ community. Black, trans, and gender nonconforming North Carolinians experience shockingly high rates of unemployment, homelessness, incarceration, and violence. If we want Carrboro to be a place where trans residents can find safety, then we must invest in Black trans futures. We need real solutions and policies that center the needs of the most marginalized members of our community, which is why I take this moment to call for our town to institute full reparations for Black Carrboro, not just as an acknowledgement of past harm, but as a commitment to ensuring that our Black trans neighbors will have equitable access to housing, education, and healthcare. Instituting municipal reparations will help build a future where Carrboro's Black trans residents are afforded the same opportunities to thrive as everyone else. We need reparations now. And to any trans person listening, you are not alone. Your existence is powerful, and your life holds sacred value. Trans people cannot be erased because trans people have always existed and always will. And to our allies, if you believe trans rights are humans' rights, we need you to stand with us, to fight alongside us, and to help us ensure that Carrboro becomes a place where all trans residents can find safety, prosperity, and joy. Thank you.
Want to do a photo?
Councilmember Frey?
Photo?
Photo?
You want a photo? Do they want to take photos?
Would you like a photo for the, for the proclamation with councilmember Frey?
Frey?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll have councilmember Haven O'Donnell to bring forth the resolution for Earth Hour.
Swing this around a little bit. There we go. I think this will work. This is a resolution for participation in Earth Hour on March 22nd, Saturday, March 22nd, 2025. So whereas, 8:30 PM, March 22nd, 2025, has been designated as Earth Hour by the World Wildlife Fund as a reminder that through collective action, individuals can make a positive impact in their fight against climate change. And whereas, since it began in 2007, Earth Hour has been known for the Lights Off movement, with individuals from around the globe switching off their lights to show symbolic support for the planet and to raise awareness of the climate crisis, nature's loss, and environmental issues affecting it. And whereas, Earth Hour 2025 strives to inspire everyone and anyone to feel inspired and empowered to play a part in protecting the planet. planet, no matter how small. And whereas, Earth Hour encourages supporters in more than 190 nations and territories annually, making it one of the largest grassroots environmental movements in the world. And whereas, Earth Hour involves two simple actions, turning off the lights for one hour and giving an hour for earth by spending 60 minutes doing something positive for our planet. And whereas, Carrboro has recognized Earth Hour for the past 14 years, made its first commitment to climate protection in 2001 through joining the Cities for Climate Protection, and is committed to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And whereas, the Town Council adopted a climate protection resolution in December 2009, accepted the Energy and Climate Protection Plan in 2014, and accepted the Community Climate Action Plan in 2017. And whereas, cities and states across the nation and around the world are joining with Carrboro to demonstrate a commitment to addressing climate action by supporting Earth Hour. Now, be it therefore resolved by the Carrboro Town Council and the Town Council hereby proclaim Saturday, March 22nd, 2025, from 8:30 to 9:30 PM as Earth Hour in Carrboro, and calls upon all residents and businesses of Carrboro to join in supporting the aims and goals of this effort. Be it therefore resolved that the Carrboro Town Council directs staff to send out a public service announcement to publicize Earth Hour, and be it further resolved that the lights in front of our town hall will be turned off March 22nd, 2025, from 8:30 to 9:30 PM in recognition of Earth Hour this day, the 18th day of March 2025. And I encourage folks to turn off lights and appreciate the starlight sky. Set a timer. Every year, I nearly forget until like 9 o'clock, so I encourage you all to get folks to set a timer and just turn off the lights and enjoy the night sky. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Haven O'Donnell, is there a motion for this resolution?
I'll move it.
Move, Councilmember Haven O'Donnell, second.
Second.
Second, if I may, or pro temp now. All in favor of accepting this resolution as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Since I was off track with the agenda, I did want to go back to public comment to ensure that there was not anyone in the audience who was not signed up for public comment but may want to speak. You may do so now. I think I see Ms. Lib, maybe. Did you want to give a public comment? Yes, so you have three minutes. I feel like you won't take three minutes, but go right ahead, Ms. Lib. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And what I was trying to speak with Mr. Hale as he came, to really appreciate the fact that World Water Day is also on Saturday. So we will have a whole day with the opportunity to celebrate earth and air and the importance of the connection between climate change and melting glaciers to even P-Fest in our water. So I just wanted to thank Mayor Fushi and Town Council for your consistent attention to taking care of water and air. And the Planning Committee for World Water Day invites all of you to come to Dr. Martin Luther King Park on Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00, and experience children's activities, bring your family. And you will also get a chance to hear Mayor Fushi speak, and Lisa Sword, who is a reporter with Climate Toms, as well as Jason Torian, who is a community organizer with Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League. So I would, if I may, ask some of the planners for this to stand. Is that okay?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, because we have, if you would stand up, please. We're Raging Grannies and Women's International League for Peace and Freedom are organizing.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lib, and to the planners. And thank you for that announcement about the event on this Saturday. Councilmembers, we are down to the consent agenda. We have three items there, and if nobody wants to pull an item, we can do this all in one single motion to pass these three items.
Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda.
I second.
All right. It's been moved and properly seconded that all three items pass. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. I did want to go back to number three. That is, in attachment A, it says that we may want to consider sunsetting the need to report on the Lloyd Broad Neighborhood Overlay District every 18 months. They also, staff also suggests that maybe we allow the town manager to convey this information in another format or timeframe. So I just wanted to ask, do you still want to keep track of this and get a report every 18 months? Or would you like Town Manager Tony to convey this information in another way? We've not heard any complaints. Residents are satisfied. So what is your pleasure? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, I actually, I'm glad we have an opportunity to speak about this. I think this is one of the sterling examples of how, when we think through what provisions a neighborhood needs, that we really have something to learn. One of the reasons that the 18-month review was set was to see, well, what's going to happen over the first 18 months. I support continuing it simply because one of the things that should come from this, even as we accept this report tonight, is to think about what we're learning from the information that's given, because it will change. It does change. And in this environment, and we keep talking about what we're facing and the headwinds ahead of ourselves, we want to know how it affects community, and this is a great read on the pulse. So.
18 months, every year and a half. So thank you, Councilmember Haven O'Donnell. Councilmember Posada.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think while it is important to continue to seek engagement and learn what's happening in there, but I do want to acknowledge that the town manager does give us a lot of information as it goes. And just in order to make staff and the town managers life a little easier as we go forward, I'm fully in line with the recommendation of staff that the future updates come through, whether it's the town manager's report, or that she does hear like every week, or through the email that we receive with, that very helpful email with everything on there, which, thank you for sending that, or whatever way it makes it the easiest for the staff and the town managers. I would be very much inclined to follow the recommendation of staff for this one.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Posada. So what I'm hearing is 18 months from Councilmember Haven O'Donnell, and also to relieve the burden on staff and let the town manager convey the information. I feel like we could do both, right? So is council, is council okay with that? We would change, it wouldn't come to us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It would come through the town manager, but still every 18 months or so.
Do we need a formal motion for that?
I don't know that we need one. I don't think we need a motion. That's just direction for Town Manager Tony.
Good deal.
Yeah, okay. So good deal. So we are at the general agenda. Town Manager Tony.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are two items on the general agenda. The first item is an update. It's a budget outlook for the FY26 budget. This is to give you a big-picture overview about the budget outlook, revenues, and some of our projections for property tax, sales tax, just big picture. As we start into the budget process, we will start getting a little bit more specific about the items that we need to prioritize and balance for our budget. And so this is a revow year as well. Chaz Alphenberg is going to open up with the outlook, and then he'll introduce Orange County staff to give a little bit about the revow process and some opportunities and suggestions there for us to help educate the community on the impact of that. So I will turn it over to Chaz Alphenberg. He's our CFO.
All right. Welcome, Chaz.
PowerPoint.
Can you pull your mic up? There we go. How's that?
Can you navigate from there?
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Manager Tony stated, the intention tonight was to provide information to council on fiscal year 2026 budgetary outlook for this coming budget cycle, and part of that looking back at our current year budget and trends so far for this current year. So the purpose of this presentation, again, to provide an overview of the town expenditure and revenue budgets, breakdown of the town financials, and preliminary data for the next fiscal year. The audience tonight, the second half of this presentation, the county tax office is here, and so they will speak to the property tax revaluation process that we will see effective this coming budget cycle. So first slide, wanted to show the expenditure budget for the town's general fund. The general fund is really, it's the best depiction of the town's financial situation, an annual fund where our expenditures are generally to be incurred within the current fiscal year. As you see over the last three years, there's our stable increases that are generally reflective of market trends and council-funded initiatives. These expenditures each fiscal year are broken into multiple budgetary groupings and segments. On this second slide here, one of those budgetary categories is called category, that represents costs for payroll benefits, operating and programmatic costs, principal and interest payments on town debt. This ratio, you know, you'll see over half of the town's expenditure budget is attributed to personnel. That is to be expected with a local government of our size. The size is up to our peers. Our debt service, only 5%. There's a question pertaining to the town's, you know, are there any hard limits on the debt service that the town should be looking at? And we are relatively low relative to our peers. Hard lines would be about 15% of our general fund expenditure budget. Once you're in that range, the local government commission starts to say you have a heavy debt burden. So a lot of capacity there for the town to grow debt service. It's more just a matter of affordability. The only other hard line would be our debt burden in relationship to the assessed valuation of all properties in the town. No one here currently, that 8% of assessed valuation. So, you know, it's more about debt affordability for the town and the residents. And this is a breakdown of that category by fiscal year. So again, you're seeing, you know, stable growth across the board, personnel operations, and debt service. The second, all right, I'm sorry, I did want to note, you know, beyond those three categories that we really focus on in our expenditure budget, there are other obligations that the town may incur, and those include transfers to other funds, that may be capital projects that we pay as we go, and ARP-enabled projects. So we don't generally consider these within our general fund budget, but if you see these on a, you know, on a budget document or in a financial report, those are just a reflection of our full commitment. And those other obligations are more one-time in nature. So with that being reflected, you see, you know, still stable growth from year to year. There is a jump between '24 and '25, and that is our ARP-enabled projects. Previously, that was reported in another fund. The next category or grouping budgetarily that we use is called function. It's a grouping of multiple departments that generally represents the general service that the town provides. You see, general government is the biggest impact to the functional area, public safety, 25%. And that, another category we use is department. So you see the highest expenditure departments are public works, police, fire, and rescue, which is to be expected. And moving on to our revenue budget, again, general fund is an annual fund, so the revenues that we use to balance the general fund budget are generally to be assessed and collected within that fiscal year. These revenues must be available to cover the general fund expenditure budget. Stable increases here across the last three fiscal years that are reflective of the market, some stable growth in real estate, stable growth in sales tax. I'll get more into sales tax here on the next slide. We have seen some slowing of spending that will affect our future in sales tax. These are the categories of our general fund revenue budget. Property taxes overwhelmingly, the majority of where we balance our general fund budget. Local sales taxes is still a sizable portion of that. Because those are so sizable, if there are, if there is volatility in any of those trends, we could have difficulty balancing our budget closing the fiscal year at a surplus, and we could very likely run into a deficit. These town, major budgetary categories represent taxes assessed on property, local sales taxes, and then charges for services, fees, permits, and some grant awards. 59%, just to zoom in, for this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2025, 59% of our property, of our revenue base in the general fund is attributed to property taxes. This is a slide indicating our current tax rate, 60.44 cents. Of that, 1.5 cents is restricted for affordable housing, and it is accounted for in a separate fund. The value of a penny is roughly $275,000 currently, and the tax office will speak more to property tax here in a moment. But a really good collection rate, over 99%. You know, back to that earlier question about our debt and what would raise a flag with the local government commission? If you have a collection rate lower than 90%, that's really when you get into questions of, you know, can your local government find the revenue to fulfill its obligations? And with this type of collection rate, very stable. And property taxes are assessed on all residential, commercial, and industrial real property. These are our sales taxes. The darker green is what we have received so far this year. We're projected to live up to the budget here in the current year. You can see we've performed quite well in fiscal year 2023 and fiscal year 2024. We have seen, and other local governments in North Carolina are seeing a slow in that growth. I think this most recent quarter, we've even seen some decline in what we were expecting. So not just a stagnant growth, but now a little bit of decline. So not just a stagnant growth, but now a little bit of decline. So we're continuing to monitor that. We do feel optimistic that we'll live up to this budget, but we're definitely keeping a cautious eye on it. And the reason, one other note, the reason why these actuals lag a little bit, there's a three-month lag on collections with the State Department of Revenue. The town receives our share three months after the sale of that took place and where the tax was assessed. So this is routine for this time of year. Now, outside of, you know, we talked about true revenues for the general fund, I did want to give a depiction of, you know, these are other revenue streams, you could say, to balance the general fund budget, and that is our fund balance. Not really true revenues, though they're already on our books, and so we're just using these funds to cover our budget. And that can be especially effective when we're covering one-time expenses, you know, ongoing projects, carrying forward of contracts, and again, generally one-time in nature. For the year ending fiscal year 2024, the town is still in an audit engagement for fiscal year 2024 to be audited. This is what we're looking at right now, this number is subject to change, but about 9.91 million. And that is within our, toward the higher end of our fund balance policy. Our fund balance policy is currently to have an unassigned fund balance between 22.5% and 35%. Any amount over that, we generally assign for future capital needs of the town. And this, you know, again, just showing that unassigned fund balance from year to year and the percentage of general fund expenditures that that fund balance represents. I did want to share upcoming dates for our fiscal year 2026 budget process. We have, departments have submitted their requests to the town manager, and we've been reviewing those requests. And so opportunities for public weigh-in and council work session on April 8th. The next council business meeting on May 6th is where the manager would recommend her operating budget and CIP, and then two public hearings, May 20th and June 3rd, and an additional council business meeting in June if that is needed. I want to call up the tax office.
While she's coming up, I just wanted to mention about the calendar. You'll notice one budget workshop. We can add another budget workshop if you all deem necessary. What I will say is that each of the public hearing dates, there will also be a very short review prior to the public hearing, and opportunities for council to weigh in on your priorities or anything you want us to make sure we include in the budget. So there will be multiple times for council to engage. So I just wanted to point that out before adoption.
Okay. Thank you, Town Manager, Tom.
Here you go.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Freeman, I'm the Tax Administrator for Orange County, and thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to provide some information about the revaluation that we are currently working on. Our notices should be going out in the mail late this week, Thursday or Friday of this week, and this is the perfect time for us to give you good information on this because we know that you will have constituents who will be asking questions, and we want to provide as much information as we can for you. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yeah, just if you, could you bring it closer?
Okay. Is that better?
I think so.
All right, okay. All right, so, let's see if I can mark this here. What is revaluation? It is the process of updating real property tax assessment to market value and to present use value as of a single appraisal date. That appraisal date is January 1 of 2025. The primary goal of a revaluation is to equalize the tax base, and the reason for that is to reestablish the fairness of the tax burden between properties, because properties change in value at different rates depending on location, on property type, what is included in the revaluation, our residential and commercial land throughout Orange County and the permanent structures on that land. It does not include personal property because that is actually reappraised annually. It is required by the North Carolina general statutes. The North Carolina law requires that we revalue at least once every eight years. Orange County has adopted a four-year cycle. This is a very simplified example of why revaluations is important and what the goal of it is. In this example, this is two houses that are in the same neighborhood. We're making assumptions here, and just like I said, it's a very simplified example. And as of the 2021 revaluation, which was four years ago, Home A would have been assessed at $205,100 and had a tax bill of $640. Home B would be assessed at $295,300 with a tax bill of $920. Both of these homes sell for $320 in 2023. Even though they both sold in 2023 for a higher amount that they currently were valued at, the value stays the same for 2024 tax bills, and the tax amounts would not necessarily change unless, of course, the tax rate changed. As a result, in 2024, Home A would be paying a property tax bill that was based on only 64% of its true market value, while Home B would be paying property tax based on 92% of its market value. And with the 2025 revaluation, both homes are reviewed and valued at $320,000, and then each of them would have a property tax bill of $1,000. So basically, what you're seeing there is how it's equalized over the four years, how the course of their value changed, and this revaluation brings them back to the forefront, brings them back to the market value. Residential appraisal is done by our Orange County appraisal team, by the appraisers who work in our office. Each of these appraisers is certified by the North Carolina Department of Revenue. They must pass required courses, they must maintain certification with continuing education every two years. And from our office, we also require that these appraisers attend a North Carolina Department of Revenue-provided sales qualifying training. And what that does is for each sale in Orange County, we review that, our appraisers review those sales, and they categorize them as either qualified or non-qualified sales. The qualified sales are used in our sales bank, and that's what we use to create and shape the values for our revaluation. A qualified sale should be an arms-and-length transaction. It should be a sale between a willing buyer and able buyer and a willing and able seller. So there's no pressure on either part of those to, for, to pay less or to pay more than the actual value of the property. The purpose of doing this is to eliminate sales that are not indicative of a fair market transaction. And generally, what we do is we use the most recent two years in the sales bank or of sales in order to shape those values for revaluation. However, we do continue the full four years of sales. We have a sales bank on our website that anyone can take a look at. Currently, we have over 8,600 sales in the sales bank, and those dates range from January 1 of 2021 through December 31 of 2024. How do we compare to other counties? Orange County is estimating a possible 52% increase countywide in values this year. It's a large, a very large increase, and this is based on the sales that are going on, have gone on the last four years. But in looking at other counties throughout the state, this is happening all over the state. I did a survey of the counties who were conducting a revaluation in 2025. I had responses from 22 counties in the survey. The average county-wide growth is 58%, with a median of 56%. The range is of 25% to 73% increase for these counties. 15 of those 22 counties conducted a revaluation in 2021, as we did. The other seven had actually done, I think, five, six, seven, eight years since they've had a revaluation. So you can see by the information that I provided here that the ones who have had a longer stretch between their revaluations, there's been a much larger jump. So with the 15 who had a revaluation in 2021, the average growth was 53%, and the range is from 25% to 67%. So we are not alone. It's a large jump, but we are not alone. Mandatory revaluation. In counties that have had rapid growth change, property value changes, state law may require early reappraisals. And the North Carolina Department of Revenue monitors the amount of change in property values by reviewing the sales ratio between revaluations. Basically, what they do is they look at the sales bank that we have and compare that to the values that we've had from 2021 and create a ratio, and then that tells them if values are increasing dramatically or decreasing dramatically, that we may need to fast forward and go ahead and do a revaluation sooner than our plan. And that was the case for us, for Orange County, because our sales ratio was so low, I think was around 64%. I'm not on the right page here. 64.45% was our last sales ratio. And state law dictates that if the sales ratio falls below 85% or goes above 115%, that the county must do a mandatory reappraisal within a three-year mark. But because we are on a four-year cycle, that did not affect us. We did not have to advance our revaluation. However, had there been a reason that we thought we should postpone it, we would not have been able to do that. In preparation for our revaluation, we've field-reviewed approximately 10,000 properties. This is about three times as many as we did for the 2021 revaluation, which was affected by COVID. You know, we were not able to do as much field review then, our methods of work were altered during COVID. So we're very excited about the fact that we were able to get out and do more field reviews. The field reviews were planned to target specific issues. We looked at neighborhoods that had experienced a large number of appeals. We looked at properties that had a large gap between the effective year built and the actual year built. We looked at commercial properties and also multi-addressed properties to know a few. This is current revaluation results. As you can see, I've got it breaking down here by the county, by the municipalities. Overall, 52% increase. Carrboro is at about 47, and as you can see, the other municipalities are about that same amount. And here you can see estimated median home values for 2025. For the county, we're a little over $500,000. For Carrboro, $604,950 is the median home value. Chapel Hill is a little higher than that, Hillsboro, Meven are a little lower. And we've also included median sale prices from our sales bank, so you can see a little comparison there and that. To give you a little bit more breakdown, for Carrboro, the commercial versus residential, commercial represents 21.57% of the value for Carrboro, and residential represents 78.43% of the value. And for the county, it's a little bit different, that runs a little under, a little less is for commercial, 18.71%, and then 81.29% for residential. The notices, we are currently, have sent our file to our print vendor, so we are awaiting for them to be able to send those notices out. We expect them to be out Thursday or Friday in the mail. So Thursday or Friday, you'll start getting phone calls and you'll be seeing your own notice. What's included in those valuation, in the notices, would be the valuation notice that shows the new value, and the FAQ that's in English and also in Spanish, that's just got basic questions and answers about the revaluation. And I think we provided a copy of that, I don't know if you have it or not, but we have provided a copy to Chaz, so he can share that with you if you'd like to see it. We also have included a new simplified informal appeals form. So if someone automatically looks at their valuation notice and they know they need to appeal or they want to appeal, they're already prepared to do that, they've got what they need to get the ball rolling. How are property taxes determined? I think you probably know pretty much how this works already. Basically, you look at the total value of all the taxable property, and in this example, the county. We call that the tax base. County agencies and departments submit annual operating budgets that are reviewed by the Budget Office and the County Managers' Office. The total budget is submitted to the Board of Commissioners, who sets the tax rate used to calculate the tax bills. And this is done when the budget is adopted each June. So a similar process, of course, is completed for Carrboro and for other municipalities. Revenue-neutral tax rate. There are always questions about the revenue-neutral tax rate, and this is basically what is required by the Budget Office to publish when there is a revaluation for Carrboro or for the county, you know, for whatever jurisdiction is doing this. They look at the new tax base, at the value we have after all the properties are revalued and the notices go out, and figure a tax rate that gives you the same amount of revenue that last year's tax bill has generated, and that's the revenue tax rate. If you were to create a jurisdiction-wide tax bill, you know, one big tax bill, that's what you would be doing. And the counties must publish, or towns must publish the revenue-neutral tax rate, and it's done so that taxpayers can look at it and determine if their county or town has increased or decreased its total property tax levy following a county-wide reappraisal of real property. And while a county or town must calculate and publish the tax, the revenue-neutral tax rate, it is not required to adopt it as the actual tax rate for the revaluation year. It is basically information for the taxpayers, and that is kind of a starting point for the councils or for the commissioners to work from. Our community outreach, we've sent out a press release back in February. We have been working to set up community outreach events that we've already started doing. We've worked with community centers, churches, civil organizations. We've worked with our community relations team with the county. We actually sent another press release out today to let folks know that the notices will be going out in the mail at the end of the week. The presentations that we're doing are much like what we're giving you. It's information about the revaluation, it's information about our appeals process, about what are tax assistance programs are available, and payment options. Because, yes, we are required to set those values, and yes, we do the tax billing and the tax collections, but also, you know, the appeals, the tax assistance programs, and the payment options are ways that we can provide customer service and to help those who are mostly affected by these changes, and especially when tax bills are increasing dramatically. So we want to make sure that all the property owners know what they have offered and what we can offer to help them out in this situation when there is going to be such a drastic change. And this is a list of the meetings that we have set up currently, that will be out in the public so that we can talk to folks and help them out with learning about the appeals process and learning what tax assistance programs are available, and just learning more about revaluations in general. And as I said, how can the tax office help? There is an appeals process. If you receive your notice and you see that you think that value is too high, then you do have the right to appeal. There is an informal appeals period that begins as soon as you receive that notice and ends April 30. There's a formal appeals process where the appeals are heard and decided upon by the Orange County Board of Equalization Review. That's a three-member team that is actually appointed by the Orange County Board of Commissioners, and that a formal appeals period begins May 1 and ends July 31 of this year. We anticipate as many as 2,500 informal appeals and 750 formal appeals. We believe that our appeals levels were low for 2021, again, due to COVID, and we had less than 1,700 informal and less than 400 formal. These are three websites that we have that can help people who are interested or think that they might need to appeal their value. The first one is where someone can go and take a look at their property and review the property characteristics that we have in our record, your square footage, number of bedrooms, is your basement finished or unfinished, those type of things. You can go and look at your property information and know that, you know, we have it correct or there's possibility that we don't have it correct, and that's when you need to do an appeal and come to us so we can find out what's wrong and get it fixed. The second website is our COMPRA webpage, and basically what you would do here is to go and put your property information in, and you can get the property sales out of our sales bank to compare. And you can get the property sales out of our sales bank to compare. So you can get an idea of what's selling in your neighborhood, in your area. And the third one is actually the online appeals portal that we have. Instead of using the paper appeals form that you receive in your notice, you could actually go online and just fill it out there and submit it online. How else can the tax office help tax assistance? This is one of the things that we can do. There are tax office administered assistance programs that are provided by the state, by the state statute, elderly or disabled home set exclusion, disabled veteran exemption, and home set circuit breaker, which is a tax deferral program. I've got information about those and and we, you know, we have information on our website about those as well. We also wanted to mention that there is the Housing Department's Longtime Homeowner Assistance Program, which is initiative by the the Board of Commissioners. And that's actually, we'll send a notification out and the tax bills that are sent out in the fall. And those applications go to Housing. Housing reviews those applications. They make the decisions on who is approved and who is not approved. They make the decision on who on how much money is given to those who are approved. And then they give us that information and we apply those funds to the tax bill. In a case where someone has already paid their tax bill, but they are eligible for assistance and they receive it, then we send out a refund check to them so that they get their money. You know, they even if they've paid it, they'll still get that money. And that's not actually administered by our office, but we do help directly in in doing that. And another final option or or way that we can help is the payment options. Recently, I think last year's the first year that we've done this, we included a payment coupon with our tax bills so that you could actually break your payment up into five different payments. Starting in August, you can do August through December. You can just send in the little payment coupon with all of your payments, you know, each time you pay. And that keeps that from being such a burden to have to come up with those funds all at one time in late December, normal least when that happens. Another option is monthly bank drafts. And and I do something like this. We we also offer this for for county employees. But but I take out, I used to have escrow, but once we paid off our loan, what I do now is I take out monthly an amount and it's set aside on a pre-bill in our office. And then once the bills are created, those funds are paid on it. So that's the same thing with this monthly bank draft that we do. Normally, people start doing this in January, but it can happen even now. We can go ahead and set that up now for folks who are interested in doing it. And we do an estimate of the tax bill and then give you an idea of how much your monthly amount would be. Some folks say, I can't pay that much, but I know I have a bonus coming up in, you know, later in the year. So I'll pay 200 a month, draft 200 a month. And then I'll come up with the rest when it's time to pay that balance. And we'll do that. You know, we 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 help it any way that we can, but we'll do those those bank drafts. And folks really like that because it's it's very convenient to have that done coming out of your bank monthly and not having to come up with it all at once. One final thing that we do is provide e-payments. And you can actually pay your tax bill on our website by ACH. You can pay by debit or credit cards. You can pay by Apple Pay and by Google Pay. And we do have a vendor that provides a service for us. And they do charge a fee. So I want to make sure that we make that very clear. It's not funds that we get in our office. It all goes to our vendor and we don't set the rates for that. However, the ACH, I think, is a very, quite a bargain. It's it's, I think, the total for doing that is $3.25. It's not based on the amount you pay. It's based on that transaction. So it's, I think it's a great option for folks to use. And that's it. So for more information, we have our email, revale@orangecountync.gov. That goes directly to our assessment staff and they can answer those questions that people have. We have chat and of course, phone where you can call in and and get information.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Freeman. I know Councilmember Posada had a question for you, correct?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. This is the first time that I'm on this side as we experience this. And full disclosure, I'm not a homeowner. I'm a renter. So this is, again, I'm trying to figure out what's the best way for me to portray some misinformation. I know that we're going to have questions, right? So from folks in the community. So if any of my questions sound elementary, forgive me. First is, I'm very curious about this appeals process. You mentioned there's multiple ways to do it. There's a paper version, there's an online version. What does that look like? Walk like, if you can, walk me through it, right? I received this letter that says, your property is now valued X amount. If you, here's appeal link or here's where you go to to appeal. Do I have to have like proof of identity? Do I need to have like the deed? Do I need to have? What what does that look like?
Who can appeal would be the owner of the property. And if it's someone other than the owner of the property, I think, if they're aggrieved, they can also, if you're an aggrieved homeowner or property owner in Orange County, you could appeal someone else's value as well. So, you know, there is that option too. So there's not necessarily a a need at that point to have ID or, you know, to to prove a deed or anything like that. So you can go online to do it or fill out the paperwork that you're given. And, you know, we have people who actually would take a picture of that with their phone and email it to us. Or they mail it in or they drop it off. And once it's received, the informal portion portion, which is the, you know, through the end of April, that's handled by our assessment staff. So what you would do is is you put down on the paper or you put in our website in the portal, the reasons that you think that the value is not correct. I don't have that much square footage. I don't, my my basement is not finished. When I looked at the characteristics on online, it doesn't match what my actual house is. So, you know, at that point, what we would do is have an appraiser contact you and, you know, or or go out to the home and take a look at it or review the the information that we have online. And they would make a decision on that. And a notice is sent out once that appeal is sent in and that that appraiser reviews it, a notice is sent out to let you know what the decision is. And it could be that we don't change it because there's not enough evidence to to for us to change it. It could be that we do. It could be that you're still not happy with it. So at that point, in the informal process, you have the right, and it's in the letter that we send you in the decision notice, you have the right to appeal to the Board of Equalization and Review, which is the formal process. So there, you know, there are other ways. If if you're not happy with what has happened, there are other ways to 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 appeal again. And if you appeal formally, what you do is it's the same kind of thing, similar form, still go online either way, provide information. You know, what's important there is we have a three-board member and we provide the information that says, this is why the value is what it is or why it should be this. And so the the important thing for the taxpayer is to also provide information as to why the value should not be that or why it should be this. And because your tax bill too high is too high is unfortunately not a good reason to appeal. You know, we don't have anything in the statutes that allows us to lower your tax bill because it's too high for you to pay. You know, it's it's we we don't have that option. So it has to be, you know, a correct value, a fair market value. And then, you know, that that's what we look at. So the information that's provided to the Board of Equalization and Review by the taxpayer, by the owner of the property and by our office is, those are considered, both sides are considered by the board, the three-member board, and they make a decision to change the value, not to change it, to change it to what the the county says it should be or to what the taxpayer says it should be. So they they have that discretion based on the information that they are given. And again, a decision notice is sent out to them after the the meeting has, you know, after the the appeal has been heard. And at that point, if the Board of Equalization Review gives you a decision that you don't like, you have an appeal window to appeal to the state, to the Property Tax Commission. And, you know, that that's going further, but you still have that appeal window. There's no requirement to get an appraisal for your property. Some people do. Some people already have one, but there is no requirement to do that. There are no fees involved in appealing your value, either informally or formally. You don't have to come to the tax office. You don't have to come to the Board of Equalization and Review Appeal Meeting. You know, we always suggest that that's good so that you can, you know, plead your case, but you're not required to do it. If you you provide the appeals form and you provide the evidence, then it can be decided without you being there. Does that answer some of your questions?
That does. Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you for that. And then kind of switching gears a little bit, many of the folks that I communicate with live in like mobile homes. It's my understanding that this would impact like if they own the land, but the home itself wouldn't be a part of this evaluation. Is that correct?
That's correct. Unless the mobile home is considered real property, then it would be. So and there are certain qualifications for a mobile home that classified as personal property or as real property. You know, the first and foremost being that that for it to be real property, it has to be that the owner of the mobile home matches the owner of the property. And then also that it has had, I'm not sure I'm going to remember all this yet. Has a permanent foundation. Wheels, axle, tongue have been removed. So that's what that's what would make it permanent as real property. And if that's the case, if it's considered real property, then it would be part of this revaluation. And the notice that they would get would would show that, you know, would show that full value. If it is personal property, then it's something that they have to list each year on a listing form and they receive that. And that will be their, you know, the realization there that it's considered personal property and that that value changes annually. So.
Gotcha. Just from my understanding is you own the land and the mobile home is there, right? It's 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 stuck there. There's no way to easily remove it because the wheels are off. Everything's off.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And the the ownership matches, you know, the the ownership is the same.
So I own the land and the mobile home?
Correct.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you for that. And then speaking again to kind of like renters, right? We know we have. Can you give me the numbers again on the 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 difference between commercial and property? You've stated them and I meant to write them down, but I did not.
Hang on one second. Did I find the right page here? Okay. The percentages between commercial and residential for Carboro. Commercial is 21.57% and residential is 78.43%.
And I assume like rental properties are falling under the residential?
Well, that's not included. If it's if it's rental and it's not considered real property, then you're speaking of mobile homes or you're speaking?
No, sorry. Like for apartment complex.
Correct. Yeah, it's apartment complexes that are are would be considered commercial. So that would be in that commercial total.
Those are my questions for now. I'm kind of figuring out how this is going to kind of trickle down on other things. But thank you for for walking me through those two things.
You're very welcome. And we're always here to help. You know, feel feel free to reach out to this email or to me or to Chad, who's our deputy assessor, and he knows it all. So, you know, we'll we'll consult him if we if we have more questions that I can't answer.
Thanks. One thing, I know that I gave them my time up, sorry. Language access. I know that you mentioned that the the thing, the the letters in English and Spanish. Curious, should someone have questions? Is there a number they can call and say, are monolingual Spanish speakers to talk to? Or neither of the two, right? We have a large population who English and Spanish are not their first language. Should the case be that they receive the letter and it's someone who speaks Arabic, for example? What what are some of the services for for folks who are in that situation?
We do have someone on staff who can translate for us for Spanish. And we're very lucky to have her there. She does an awesome job. We don't have anyone who can speak other languages, but there are services that the county provides that we can use over the phone or even in a chat or on the email that would help us translate for other languages. So we do have that option. And I'm not even sure the name of it, but I know we've used that several times in the past.
Perfect. That helps. Thank you so much. Now I'm the Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Posada. Before we go to Councilmember Haven O'Donnell and then Councilmember Palmer, are you able to share this presentation with us? Or how do how does that work?
Yeah. Yes, yes, ma'am. And as a matter of fact, I do plan to put this on our our website so that it will be out there. I don't, we don't have it out there yet, but we do plan to put that and as well, the the list of meetings that are available. So we'll have both of those on the website in the next day or two.
All right. Sounds good. Councilmember Haven O'Donnell?
Yeah. Thank you for for asking for that, Mayor Fushie. I'm going to try and do this in the order that I I kind of was taking notes. First of all, thank you for your presentation, Nancy. I do not envy you. I do not envy you. Let 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 me just say that regarding tax assistance programs, most people are not even aware they exist. So in the mailing, will there be ample information about that?
I think that some of the questions.
Do you recall there are other tax assistance?
All the listing forms out in January and then the FAQ mentions it.
Okay. So, yeah, we the the FAQ that we're sending out with the revaluation notices does mention the tax assistance programs and how to reach us and and how to go find it on our website. And that also is, I know people don't really necessarily read their bill and they don't necessarily read their listing form, but that's information that we put on the listing form every January and we put it on the our tax bills every year when they were received in August. And of course, it's on our website too. But that will be some of the things that we're addressing when we're in these meetings so that if there's somebody who says, well, I'm over 65. My income is limited, can do what I qualify? You know, then we can talk with them more and help them figure out how to get the application done and and apply for that.
Is there any part of the support services that help to, in in terms of outreach to elderly or disabled regarding their tax bills?
As far as you mean, as as far as assistance?
Proactively outreach to seniors or disabled?
Well, and this is why we're having the meetings that we're doing, that we're doing with Gaines Chapel Church and and some of the other places that we're doing them, so that we can work with the people that are in the community. We've been to to our Rogers Road Community Center before. But it is usually it's, we go there and people come to us. So we do have a good group of elderly. As a matter of fact, two of the the committees, the meetings that we have set up are with the Department of Aging. One will be at the Passmore Center in Hillsborough. One will be at the Seymour Center in Chapel Hill.
Right. I saw that on the list. Excellent. And and I would just say that the Passmore Center and the Seymour Center both have ample lists of folks for outreach. To take it one step further. And the reason I say this is because we do not know what's going to happen with Social Security and Medicaid.
Yes.
And so, you know, I'd rather we anticipate, you know, what happens if the scaffolding for for either of those or both of those is dismantled to some degree or delayed, you know, or becomes inconsistent, then what? You know, I'd rather.
The home set exemption program actually looks at 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 your age or at the fact that you are disabled. It also looks at your income. So if income changes, there might be people who have not qualified in the past because they were just above the limit. But if there is something going on that changes what their income is, you know, they can reapply and and, you know, would would qualify at that point. So there's a provision there.
Yeah. And you're anticipating my, the next question I had, which has to do with the unknowns where that folks are facing who have federal and grant funding, that their employment status is now going to change or has changed in the last month or is inconsistent. You know, is is that something that folks are looking at?
What what we can provide from the tax office is what is mandated by law. And we're not allowed, I'm not allowed to administer other programs, which is why I pointed out the fact that Housing is doing the Longtime Homeowners Assistance Program. So we can do what the law provides. And if the if there is legislation because of the the things that are happening currently, there is state legislation that would do more, you know, for as far as assistance is concerned, you know, we will be there doing it because it will be, you know, something that the law allows us to do. There's nothing else that the county provides. There is, you know, I know that there's help through housing. And oftentimes, when we have someone who comes in who's having trouble paying their tax bill, you know, we we try to reach out to other departments and get them some other services that they might need, you know, we try to reach out to other departments and get them some other services that they might need, you know, help with getting their electric bill paid or what other issues that they're having as well, you know. So we do try to network and not just say, I'm sorry, you know, you can't pay your tax bill, you know, we're going to foreclose or we're going to tax your bank account or we're going to garnish your wages. You know, we do try to work with those folks and, you know, help them figure out a way to get that bill paid. And we also try to help them find other resources that will help them within the county, you know, to get more services and more help.
Yeah, I was really glad to see there's several different ways that payment can be made. I think that that's been a very positive change. So I don't know to whom I really raise this question, but do we have data on home sales in Carrboro or the Chapel Hill address for Carrboro over maybe the last 15 years so that we have a sense of? Because when we look at the data that our CFO, Chaz, has shared with us, we don't see how it has shifted. And of course, there were 15, 20 years ago, Carrboro became a target for development. How can we get that data and just see what that looks like over time so we know where we are in a moment in time?
We do have the information, the sales for the last four years for this revaluation. We still do have sales information from the 2021 revaluation. So, you know, that's eight years back that we could certainly share with you that.
Yeah, that would be great.
That we would be happy to send. I can send that to Chaz and he can share that with you. Beyond that, I know what the law says is that two revows is what we have to do as far as keeping records. It may be that we do have some information that's even older, but I don't know. That would have to be something for us to look and see if we do, you know, to provide you more.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. I know that the only information I have about revale appeals actually may stretch back to, you know, like 2017 when, and I don't know what the percentage off the top of my head was then, but several people were appealing. And I'm just curious to see what that percentage change between 2013 and 2017 is that so many people were appealing in 2017. And of course, COVID changed things after that. So that would be great to see that information.
Okay.
And to see what the shift is in market values. You know, this revaluation is based on, up until December 2024, you said, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, this next year, I think, is going to be critical. You know, '25, '26. I'm not sure how to formulate a question about what we don't know.
Well, the values that we are providing now are effective January 1 of 2025. And it's based on what's happened in the past, in the past four years up to that point. So what's, sales that are happening now, we are still qualifying. We're still looking at, we're still gathering that information because we'll be doing this again in four more years in 2029. But what's the sales that are happening now here in March are not affecting the values that we are sending out because we are only looking from, you know, December of 2024 and back to January of 2021 when we're, you know, coming up with these values. Is that helpful?
Yeah, it does. And so one of the things that I'm thinking about is, you know, here we are, you know, March 18. What will home sales in Orange County and specifically Carrboro or the Chapel Hill addresses in Carrboro look like by September 18? I want to know if there's a spike. That's what I'm saying here. Because of all of the, you know, the changes in the university grant programs, the changes in the federal programs, da, 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 da. Is that something that, some information that we would be able to get, the council would be able to get by, let's say, September 18 or October 18?
We would have, I mean, the information that we would have would be sales. You know, it would be the sales that we're gathering. And again, that's something we could provide you. We could, you know, send you an update in September to show you what's happened in the last, you know, those three quarters, you know, to give you an idea.
Precisely. And the change in, because if, what was it? I don't know, $500, I don't know, $509,000 was the median sale? What that looks like, you know, between now and, you know, September? Okay. I think that that's, if my question, just to tell you how much I appreciate the, you guys are in between a rock and a hard place. But I really appreciate the way that the office has in the last six, eight years, maybe eight years, you know, addressed the need for more proactive service. You know, I know because we do something like an installment plan. And, you know, I think that that's, it's critical that people realize it. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. What we do is not fun and people don't like it. I mean, I don't like paying my taxes either, but, you know, what we can do is provide customer service. You know, if we've got somebody who's angry and not understanding and we can talk to them and explain it to them, let them know what the law is and why we're doing it the way we're doing it. At the end of a call, they may still not be happy with what is happening, but they understand. And if they can say, thank you for the information, I feel like I've done my job. And everybody in my office feels that way, that the customer service component is the most important thing that we can provide.
Yeah, and I know.
Yes, we're taking all your money, but, you know, we try to be nice about it.
Well, in 2017, the folks who I knew who contacted me because they were concerned about going through an appeal, they had that experience. It's like, I'm not happy about this, but they handled it. They gave me a feeling of caring that I'm in this position. Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Haven O'Donnell. Councilmember Palmer?
Yeah, I'll try to be quick and give the thanks. Two of my three questions already got answered. One was about the language access and one was about the slides. But the third one is just a clarification on the differing rates between the residential and commercial. When you said 21.5%, so if I'm looking at my personal tax bill, I see like per hundred dollars point. So the total, as a resident homeowner, the total that I see is the .78. Is that how that is expressed? And then that Carrboro component of that is .6?
No.
Can you clarify?
The information that I was giving you there is for the whole Carrboro tax base, 21% is commercial properties and.
There we go. See, that's what I'm.
Yeah.
So are the rates actually charged to commercial property owners different? Or is it the same rate?
It is the same.
It's all the same rate? Okay, thank you. That is the clarification I needed. All right.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilmember Palmer. I am not seeing any more questions for Ms. Freeman. I will say that I also appreciate the options. We know that the taxes have to be paid, but certainly appreciate the options of payment and assistance, you know, for those that might need it. And it could be more people this year is what I'm thinking. But thank you so much, Ms. Freeman.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
So Chaz, our CFO is available. Are there questions? Councilmember Frey, I see. And then Mayor Protim now.
Chaz, one question for me, and it's about the guidelines for the unallocated fund balance. So we have, what I've been given to understand is an unusually high range for unallocated fund balance? Yep, sorry, unassigned. The 22.5% to 35%. From your experience, can you give me a sense of what is considered usual for a town of roughly our size or what you might? When you started here and you saw 22.5% to 35%, did it surprise you to see it here?
I think relative to our peers, this is normal. And we spoke with our financial advisors about this. We're also small enough to where even slight shifts in our primary revenue streams could really threaten our ability to cover some of our obligations. So, you know, we've, we have heard that it's not concerning to be over our fund balance policy by that much. If there's a dollar amount associated with this, I don't have that dollar amount handy. I was trying to see how much, you know, 1% of fund balance on assignment could result in. But to answer your question, no. I think that it was not a concern for our financial advisors or for the LGC. I think the biggest concern is if you're appropriating too much fund balance from year to year. But I think the strategy of setting aside those reserves for future capital needs is a good one.
Thank you.
Mayor Protim now, I believe, is.
And I just want to make sure that, I mean, we basically anticipate no, I think this would particularly apply to personnel, but am I hearing correctly? We have no real federal meaningful sources in our budget that we would anticipate beyond, like in our town and tax base, what Councilmember Haven O'Donnell is talking about, as far as, I'm thinking particularly personnel. We don't have federally funded positions, right?
That is correct.
Killer.
Thank you.
Councilmember Haven O'Donnell has a question.
So I'm curious, Chaz, what you're thinking in terms of the sales tax for the county and that it's slowing, there's some decline. Is there a certain percentage that, and drop that would concern you? In other words, I mean, yeah. I mean, is there a certain percentage that we look towards that we evaluate as we go to make sure that it's consistent with where we've been before, before we realize that that may, it may be tanking?
Sure. We're, the town has conservative, has been pretty conservative on its budgeting of sales tax for the past several fiscal years. In addition to budgeting conservatively, we monitor this monthly. The Department of Revenue sends out distribution reports to local governments, and we keep an eye on those regularly to ensure that if there is decline in sales tax, we take appropriate action within the town to potentially slow spending. I'm not seeing any concern like that yet. And I would struggle to put a specific percent on that to say when I would be concerned.
I don't want to be apolitic here, but fact is that, you know, much of the, a good percentage of the sales tax that comes back to Carrboro has to do with online sales, right? Internet sales, Amazon, and, you know, I mean, we get a percentage. Yeah. And it's a pretty substantial percentage of our sales tax in the county, is it not?
I wouldn't say substantial, but there is a percentage that comes back to local communities' point of sale.
Okay. What I'm trying to understand is, I just want to understand, you know, we're talking about boycotting online sales. How much does that hurt ourselves?
I'm not sure. I could look into that if that's helpful, Mayor.
So, I mean, it's, I mean, it's very, it's a different world, you know, and I'm just trying to understand what could catapult a shift in our sales tax revenue. And I'm looking at factors I don't even know could exist. But for sure, you know, we have a whole list of places to quote unquote boycott and are we shooting ourselves in the foot, you know, locally? I just want to get a good feel for that.
Yeah, there, we are in some uncertain times and we can't always predict human behavior. We do see some slight decline in sales tax revenue. The good thing is that we were conservative in our projections last fiscal year. So we're not up against what some of our peer communities are up against who over-projected sales taxes, and so now they're having to cut. We are in a good position right now. So even if we see some reduction in our sales tax revenue, we're still in a good position. And so, as is stated, there's a three-month lag. So it's likely we will meet at least close to our projected goals for what we budgeted because we budgeted conservatively. So right now, we're not, you know, feeling any anxiety about our sales tax revenue at this point.
Great.
But we will be glad to keep you all posted and we'll have better projections as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Haven O'Donnell. Councilmember Posada has a question.
Just a quick, quick comment. First, thank you for the presentation. I'm glad to see it. And I just wanted to encourage everyone who's watching and everybody home, one of the ways that we can avoid losing any tax revenue from online sales is shopping local. And we support our local enterprises, so let's do that. Thank you.
Yep. Nice reminder. Thank you, Councilmember Posada. Any other questions for Chaz? Thank you so much, Chaz. Appreciate it. And we were just asked to receive this presentation, councilmembers, and we have done that. Town manager Tony, next item, I believe, the last item.
The last item for the evening is an item to update the town council on advisory boards and commissions to discuss about the membership process and how to get some of these vacancies filled. So our town clerk, Lamar Joyner, will give you all this update.
You want to go to the podium, Mr. Joyner?
If you're not forcing, if you're not forcing me, I will sit here.
No, I'm not going to force you. You can sit right there. Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening. I know it's been kind of a long evening, but I did want to address the opportunity to review the membership process and hopefully make some streamlined suggestions. As we all know, that recently we consolidated the boards and we consolidated them into nine advisory boards and commissions. With that being said, we did review the council liaisons and made those appointments. So we do have people in place for that. The staff liaisons are still readily available for any assistance that we need. And first, I want to thank the council as well as the staff liaisons and the residents for being patient because everybody has been eager to get these appointments and these vacancies addressed. So first off, I want to thank everybody. There have been quite a bit of inquiry on these items, these vacancies. And once again, I do know staff liaisons have already been doing some recruitment and some addressing of these membership issues. So let me go to the next slide. So the vacancy process and how we want to handle that, the vacancies will be advertised in partnership with the communications department along with the liaisons and through town-related activities such as Carrboro in Motion, any opportunities that we have to get out and engage with the community. Word of mouth, for instance, council members have opportunity to direct residents to see these vacancies that we have and to apply if they feel that they would like to apply. The applications will be received. They will be checked for eligibility from the clerk's office, and we will share those applications with the liaisons at that time and/or chairpersons. New applicants for appointment may be interviewed by liaisons/chairs prior to their appointment. They can be invited to a meeting prior to that process. And so I don't know that there will be a formal interview process, but there can be a process where they are allowed to engage and to see if there is a fit for these applicants to be a member of these boards. A list of qualified applicants will be provided to the council for appointment. This is, I think, maybe a little new in process of what has been done. I know typically there is a list of applicants, but I think there may have been just provided at the day of appointment with town council. So hopefully, we can provide this information early so these applicants can be reviewed and it can be accessed by the council. This information will also be provided to the liaisons as well, so they will have this information as well. And within that list, there could possibly be appointment recommendations to the council. This will be maybe recommendations from liaisons and/or chairs. And hopefully, if this, if you see fit, this board appointment section could be added to the end of the meeting agenda where we can assess each particular. where we can assess each particular board or commission and see if this is an opportunity for the council to make these appointments. I think what we could do is, on the next page, you will see a potential list that will be provided to you. I, if it is the will of the board, I would rather just provide this information with the address and some of the other stuff to just council, whereas the names of the applicants will be public-facing and will be listed on the actual agenda page for public consumption. This is kind of what is going forward, because in a lot of cases, applicants shy away from participating in boards when some of their public information is out there with retaliation from, you know, having addresses out there and social media and stuff like that. So wanted to kind of provide, this would be something, this form that you have here would be something that would just be provided to the council. So hopefully, that is something that we can agree upon, or if you see that it needs to be something differently, we can go forward with that. So, but that was my issue, that was my reasoning for wanting to have this be just provided to council and not be posted on the public website. And so, that being said, I would like to take some questions. There is a link to the advisory boards and commissions page website here as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Joyner, for the presentation. So we're asked to receive the information and make any suggestions. And I see Councilmember Posada, and then Councilmember Frey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Joyner, for all the work that you've been doing on these commissions, as well as the rest of the staff. I just had a quick question on the increase of privacy. I think I like that piece quite a bit. In the past, when we've gotten the recommendations or having to make decisions on board members, we get with our packet, their entire application, right? That has, you know, more, a lot of personal information, including, you know, the address, all that, you know, depending on the, whatever board they're applying for, and whatever their story is, and like, in the application, that's all public. So if I'm understanding this correctly, if you want to go back just one, to the slide with the, with that sheet that you want to present to the, to the council. Councilmembers will receive this. But how would we, would we at all review those applications? Would that be, would that be information that we receive at all, or just not public?
You, you will receive, sorry, you will receive that email? You will receive a PDF of each applicant, the council will, but it wouldn't be on the public website?
But it wouldn't be, like, on the packet here, right?
Correct.
That goes out to the public?
Correct.
Wouldn't be there, is what you're saying?
If that is the will of the council.
Okay, that's what you're suggesting.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay, no, and I appreciate that, and I think that is a great way to move forward. I would say that maybe if, one adjustment would be that if the same sheet would be added to the agenda, just mark out the addresses.
So, by the way, like, this sheet would not be public-facing as well. This would be given to you. All would be public-facing, would be the names of the applicant.
Okay, that helps, that, that helps.
If that, if that is the will of the council.
Understood that part, then thank you for that. That, for me, I think I definitely want to move forward with that, keeping all this information private, whatever is public, just the names and the application.
And just, just to, just to clarify, and to make sure that y'all understand, that the application information is public, but it will not be broadcast. If somebody was to ask for this information, by law and by statute, I would have to provide this information. But I don't want to readily put it out there if it is not, if it is not the will of the council.
I understand, yeah, and thank you for that clarification, right? Because it would be, someone, I imagine, would do, like, submit for, what is, what is that process called? FOIA, something for information?
And you can, and even if you are providing some of this information, you can redact sensitive information if you choose to.
Yeah, no, I like it, I think, thank you for bringing this up. I'm fully in, on board with supporting this piece. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And so before, who was the name, was there somebody else?
It was me, Madam Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Frey. I did want to just look at Town Attorney Herman. You were shaking your head, meaning you probably have already talked to him, haven't you?
I haven't, not specifically about this.
I think he was shaking yes, like, everything was fine. Okay, so good, all right, thank you. Councilmember Frey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Joyner, a quick question. Right now, in addition to application information, the names, addresses, phone numbers, and email addresses that applicants provide are currently, or that appointed members provide are currently published on the town website? Is the idea that in addition to this change, that we would also change how we publish the lists of members of advisory boards on the town website?
I would hope so. That would be a conversation that I would have to have with communication, and they are partnering in this process, but that would be something that, which they kind of manage the actual public website. So that would be communication that I would have with the communications department.
Thank you so much. I bring that up because I think that it is, generally speaking, in this day and age, a good idea for the town not to publish people's residences or direct contact information as a, as a general matter. Even though that, that material is public, there's a difference between public on request and public for a web scraping tool to go get.
For sure, and that is what a lot of local governments are going towards, and that's what my previous iteration of being a clerk, that's what kind of we went to as well, so.
Okay, I'm also amenable to that. I had one further follow-up, I'm sorry, two further follow-up questions.
Sure.
One is, is the idea of this plan that appointments would come before the board as they're able to be made? In other words, in the past, we've sometimes had an annual cycle that's been defined by board. As a result of these changes, does this mean that we would get appointments throughout the year as the, they were able to be made?
I think so. I think that is the suggestion, because I think it allows you not to be overwhelmed with a lot of appointments at one time, number one. And number two, these reappointments or these vacancies will not happen in a vacuum. They will be dispersed throughout the process, so I think that would, and they have obviously term limits, so that would be part of that.
I think it makes a lot of sense for us to, to have these happening throughout the year, also so that then vacancies don't persist as long.
Correct.
Because it's really important for the boards to be able to do their business at all times of year and not be struggling for a quorum in the winter, because the appoint, the vacancies have built up during the year, and they can't be filled until, until the spring, which is what's happened in the past. Thank you. My last question is, do you, do you have current numbers on how many vacancies there are in general? This is not something I'm expecting you to just rattle off the numbers for all of them, but do you have the numbers on how many vacancies there are and how many open applications there are?
I don't have that readily right now, but I will provide that to you. I did send out, maybe a few weeks ago, to make sure my membership information or the town clerk's membership information was the same that the staff liaisons had. So I do have some of that information, and I will provide that information to you in the email.
Thank you very much. I would appreciate that. Something that I wanted to bring to your attention, I'm aware of at least two people who have been waiting on a response to their application in excess of two years. And some of that time is because of the pause that we put on appointments while we were reassorting them, but both of these people have been waiting in excess of one year when we applied the pause and have continued to wait.
We will address that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Frey. I believe Councilmember Haven O'Donnell had a question.
I just want a clarification on Councilmember Frey's question, which is, will advisory board members' names be still listed with the advisory board that they are members of on the website?
That is the intention.
Yeah, because community members like to know.
For sure.
Okay, thanks. And thank you for, I know this is a huge job.
Yeah, and once again, I do want to thank staff, I do want to thank liaisons and the actual commissions and advisory boards. They have been patient, they have been eagerly waiting for this to happen, so do want to thank everybody.
Yeah, there was, I mean, since the pandemic, you know, it's just like the bottom kind of fell out of how to get seats filled. So I really appreciate, you know, coming in and just, you know, reworking it and making it efficient. It's really appreciated.
Thank you.
And so, Mr. Joyner, so would we be starting to see appointments as soon as, what, April 1st?
I think so, I think so. I do know I have a lot of interest in some of these, making some of these appointments, so some of these board memberships can be fulfilled, and to actually, in some cases, to create quhors for some of these advisory boards. And I also would like to say that we can revisit some of this information and be flexible in how this is going. If we see fit that this is a chance to correct something or to make an adjustment to this process, I think we can do that, if that is the will of the council.
Very good. Any other questions, councilmembers? So that is the end of our regular agenda. Councilmember Posada, take it away.
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.